Good evening. It is Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. This is the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Thank you. Terri Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Labra.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. And I don't know what everybody heard or didn't hear, but we did have a little bit of technical difficulty there. So hopefully, everybody is online and we can proceed as normal. I do have some opening instructions here. The situation we're currently dealing with is constantly changing. As part of the Governor's Safe Start Proclamation, the Planning Commission is conducting our meeting remotely. Unfortunately, we are not able to allow members of the community to gather in person or attend. We want to protect you and your families and recognize the need for social distancing. We encourage you to provide comments or concerns on any matter via email at planning@everettlaw.gov. You may also watch the meetings on Comcast Channel 21 or Frontier Channel 29 or online You may also listen in telephonically if you do not have digital access. Please call 425-616-3920, conference ID 636-875-046-POUND. The public is allowed to participate via the same call-in number and conference ID. If you are accessing this meeting via phone, please be aware that there is about a 10-second delay on the broadcasting screen. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit everettlaw.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone or if you're calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six until called upon. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We know these are challenging times and appreciate your willingness to be transparent, to continue to reach out to our community and keep everyone informed as we navigate through this time. With that, I'll ask if commissioners have had a chance to review the meetings from, or the minutes from our last meeting on February 2nd and if there are any requests for changes or additions to the minute. Hearing then, do we have a motion to approve?
This is Commissioner McGinn. I move to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Uh, this is Commissioner Zalinski. I just have one slight correction to the footer at the bottom of the page. It needs to be corrected to show the February 2nd meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, good, good catch, Commissioner Zalinski.
Thank you.
And with that, I will second the motion.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Labra.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Upstand.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Terri Yanisak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any, thank you. Do we have any commissioners with any, any reports? Commissioner Zalinski, do I see your hand raised?
That was for the correction previously.
Got it. And any, any reports? Okay, staff, any staff, staff comments?
Hello, this is Becky McQuary and I am, wanted everyone to know that I have transitioned to the long-range planning manager position here at the city. So I'm happy to be here tonight as the staff person to provide you some staff comments. First of all, I wanted to let you know that the city is continuing their planning director selection process. So we hope that that's moving along and at, at a point soon, we will have a, a planning director appointed. I wanted to again give you an update on the Rethink Housing Action Plan project. We had some scheduled activities, public engagement activities for the month of March. However, we're going to be adjusting the schedule. One, couple of things that, early comments that we've gotten from our community outreach so far. We want to try and incorporate maybe some more material into our outreach efforts as well as, we just want to get, use some other avenues to, to get people to participate. So you'll see kind of a new schedule come out about that. And Commerce, I believe, is, is going to be extending our grant deadline so that we can allow for more, more public input as we move that project along. Last week, you heard Karen kind of provide you, Karen Stewart provides you a draft long-range planning work program. So we're further defining that. And as we're doing that, we are making sure that we put out a more long-range schedule for the Planning Commission so you will know what's coming up. However, I don't believe that we have anything to bring to you at the March 16th scheduled meeting. So we will cancel that meeting. And we'll be back to you in March. We believe we'll be talking to you about, as you know, we have a 2024 comprehensive plan update. And that does take some time to plan and schedule. And it actually takes a couple of years. Some of you have already been through that, but it takes a couple of years to get through that process. So you're going to start to see things coming forward. And the precursors for that are obviously our Billable Lands Report that we're having done at the county level. Our countywide planning policies are being update, updated to be in line with the Puget Sound Regional Council's updated vision document. And then we will be launching with the county and sort of our growth target reconciliation or allocation project process for our next comprehensive plan update. So there's a lot of work coming. We just want to get that queued up and make sure that you can take a look at that long-term schedule and know how that's gonna come along to you. Tonight, you're going to be hearing from Sound Transit about the efforts that they're beginning on behalf of the ST3 project. Obviously, that involves Everett, and so it'll be good to hear from them about their, their process and their plans and their schedule. And then you will hear from us about how we're going to be plugging into, into the process. I guess that's about it unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions? I guess I'll just say, congratulations, Becky, on your new role and welcome. Look forward to working with you. Any other commissioners with questions or comments? Okay, we have two agenda items tonight. The first item, one is the Model Code Partnership Project. And I think we go back to Becky for that.
Yeah, I'll just make some introductions. Tonight, we have with us Eric Ashley Vink. He's with Sound Transit as well as Miranda Redinger, who's also with Sound Transit. And they're going to talk a little bit at a high level first about the Sound Transit 3 project, the Everett Light Rail Link, as well as the Model Code Partnership Project that is ramping up for the City of Everett. So with that, I am going to turn it over to, is it Ashley or, or Miranda that will start us off?
I'm going to start you off and I will pull up the PowerPoint. Share my screen. Can we see that?
Not yet.
Okay, great.
There we go. Yep.
Thank you. I will start with a real quick introduction. Miranda Redinger, I'm a senior project manager with Sound Transit, focused on the Everett Link specifically, alternatives development, station area planning, external engagement in this model code project. But I wanted to add briefly that I was a land use planner in the city shoreline for 12 years prior to starting with Sound Transit in August of 2019. So I have spent much time with planning commissions and I understand that you do the heavy lifting of recommending about comp plans and light rail plans and a lot of these potential model codes that we'll be talking about tonight. So just want to thank you for your work. And it's great to meet you tonight because I will be seeing more of you over the next several years. So first, a brief intro for the Everett Link extension to set the table. Tonight, we will be focused on the model code and the Planning Commission's role in that. And here is a map of the ST3. Once all the projects are built out, this will be, the map on the right represents 116-mile regional system with 50 stations. And eventually, Everett will be connected to Bellevue, Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah, Tacoma, Ballard, and West Seattle. Here is a list of the extension lines that will be opening in the next few years, which is pretty wild. We've got three stations in the North Gate Extension, six to Hilltop Tacoma, 10 to East, in East Link. What you're probably most interested in is the four stations from ST2 that will take train service up to Linwood by 2024, and then three stations in Federal Way and two in Redmond.
Miranda, sorry to interrupt. I can't see anything on my screen. I don't know if you're sharing a map right now. I, I don't know if other people can see it or not.
Yeah, it's a PowerPoint. So I will do a better job at kind of talking through some of the things on the slides. So right now, we're looking at the ST3 representative project. And before I go through the components, I do need to note this asterisk at the bottom of the screen, which says, "All project delivery dates currently under review due to a board realignment process." As you are, I'm sure, are aware, our board is going through a process between now and hopefully July that they're looking at the full expansion package due to some budget shortfalls based on the COVID pandemic and recession, which I'm sure you are very well familiar with. So the representative project is about 16 miles and currently contains six funded stations, including two parking facilities, one in Everett, and one provisional or unfunded station there at Airport Way and 99. It also includes an operations and maintenance facility, which I'll talk a little bit more about. And by 2040, the projected ridership would be somewhere between 37,000 and 45,000 people. It was anticipated to start in 2036. And then the operations and maintenance facility north is a system-wide facility. It'll support the entire expansion and with a capacity to hold 150-plus light rail vehicles intended to be open by 2032. But note the tricky asterisk. And also, the asterisk appears on this slide, which is to, it's a graphic of the planning, design, and construction process. And importantly, over the next year and a half roughly, we'll be going through alternatives development, which kind of kicks off formally with scoping, through which we will identify and screen a variety of station, route, operations, and maintenance facility alternatives. Your staff and elected officials and public will be involved in this. We'll explain a little bit more about that later. This phase ideally ends with the Sound Transit Board identifying a preferred alternative to take into the draft environmental impact statement. And then we'll switch into environmental review, starting with the draft EIS. Then with the board confirming or modifying the preferred alternative, we'll go through some preliminary engineering, the final EIS. And then the Sound Transit Board will select the project to be built. But until the FTA makes the record of decision, that is really the, the endpoint when we can say, yes, this is, this is the project, this is what it's going to be. Then we move into design. So final design and route procurement, commissioning of the station and the public art, needing land use and construction permits, and then beginning property acquisition and relocation. And then we move into construction, which starts with groundbreaking and then updates mitigation, safety education, testing, pre-operations, and then the start of service. The alternatives development process will be, you know, we'll take the different alternatives and then we'll eventually kind of filter through a funnel of three levels of evaluation based on criteria, which get to really identifying location options with the most effective transportation solutions, land use, economic development, and TOD criteria, transit-oriented development. We have goals to preserve the environment and create mobility that is equitable. And it also, of course, needs to be financially sustainable and constructible. We will utilize three advisory groups as per the system expansion plan. There's the elected leadership group. You will have representation there. There's the inter-agency group that is for staff level and you will have representation there. And the one that's worth spending just an extra minute about is the community advisory group. Historically, this has been called the stakeholder advisory group. And you work with, I'm sure you have had many advisory groups from residents over the years and stakeholders. We're pivoting a little bit this time to really focus on that it is, we, we want members to be experts in the community, not, you know, traffic engineers that happen to live in the neighborhood. So we will be doing a slightly different recruitment process here. And we're really going to focus on some relationship building because Sound Transit, not previously having served this county, we, we want to get and form some relationships with the community. And an advisory group where we're really looking for people who are transit riders, who may have mobility challenges or live in multilingual households are really some of the qualifications we'll be looking at through the recruitment process for that. It likely won't start until at least after realignment, so maybe next fall. But stay tuned for information on that. Part of the reason we are having this focus, I'll talk about in the next couple of slides, one of which is that it's a, it's a pretty diverse corridor compared to some of our other extensions, including 23% population low-income, 46% communities of color, limited English proficiency at 15%, with the top three languages being Spanish, Russian, and Korean. And there's a map here on the right that kind of breaks down some demographics by census tracts. And you can see the most diverse areas are near the Evergreen Way 526 Station and then also near the SR99 Airport Road, the provisional station, and, and near the Mariner Station. So this, for this extension, utilizing a racial equity toolkit. And part of, we're using that to inform our engagement process. We're using it to inform our criteria and making sure that we're looking at alternatives through a lens of equity and really trying to quantify benefits for underserved communities, communities of color, and avoid disproportionate impacts. We're trying to, you know, really quantify more in the criteria how we maximize benefits and minimize impacts. But part of that is, like I said, doing more proactive engagement with historically underserved communities. And I can stop there for a minute to see if anybody has questions about the project, understanding that, you know, a lot of the answers, we don't know yet. But before I move into the Model Code Partnership segment.
Any commissioners with questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Finch.
Thank you for the presentation so far. I guess the, the biggest question I have is, given the challenges with the budget, what's the likelihood that service will start as it's been scheduled to Everett Station?
Eric, do you want to weigh in on this one?
Sure, I'll just take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Eric Ashley Vinka. I'm the Government and Community Relations Manager for the North Corridor. So I oversee everything that runs basically from the shoreline all the way up into Everett. And that, you know, the question that you're asking, I would suggest that you're talking about, you know, everything that's happened recently that's been in the news in terms of the need for realignment. And what I can tell you is that we've got three board members from Snohomish County that have been champions for us, for, for the community, really. And it's going to be up to them to work it out regionally with, with our partners, you know, across the board to, to find out how they get there. There's been some good news that really we've been focusing on in terms of our, you know, pursuit of federal dollars that came over the weekend. And we're going to continue to do that. But I think what I would stress here is it's possible and there's possible that it's, there's a delay. What people in the City of Everett can do and throughout Snohomish County is, you know, reach out to us through this process of realignment that's going to, you know, it's happening now, but really engaging the public on options in April. And I'd be happy to send that link in the chat so that everybody has access to that, to watch that process as it evolves.
And when you say realignment, just for the benefit of, of the public, are you talking about a change in the physical alignment of the potential light rail? Or are you talking about a realignment of priorities for stations coming online?
So in terms of what we'll deliver, I mean, if you look at the, if you were able to see the slides, I'm not sure if you were one of the people that couldn't see them. The representative alignment as passed by the voters in 2016 is, is our plan, you know, our, our commitment to deliver that to the voters. So in terms of, are we going to, you know, take the westward swing that goes out to the Southwest Industrial Center, Payne Field, and Boeing and lock that off? That isn't likely. I mean, that's a huge deviation from what we told voters that we would deliver. And so the, the intent here is to prioritize a number of things that would get us to deliver all these projects as close to the original timelines as possible.
Interesting. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I think, actually, I think I'll ask a question if I may. This is Commissioner Yanisak. A couple of things, I just wanted to, some of the terminology you're using, North Corridor, I'm assuming, does that mean everything north of Seattle?
So North Corridor, really, yeah, that, that involves much of Linwood Link, but there's a split between Linwood Link that has Seattle in it. And so we kind of split that in half. But I have maps that if, if you wanted, I could show that to you. I just, if you gave me a second, I could pull that up and share that at the end of this.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding the terminology. It's kind of coming fast and furious here. So I assume North Corridor meant north of Seattle. And then within that is that the Linwood Link and then the Everett Link would be between Linwood to Everett.
That is correct.
Am I understanding?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I do have a question. When we're talking about, you know, kind of the uncertainty about dates and, and whether or not I can stay on track due to, to funding and, and budget issues. When we're talking about a delay, are, are we talking about a delay in getting started on the project or just a delay in, in, in the completion date? Or I guess I'm just wondering what, what stage that delay affects?
Yeah, I mean, it, it could be any, any of the, the above, really. I can tell you that with the Everett Link project, our team was paused last year, the kickoff of everything that Miranda just talked about. We worked internally to get this to the board and have the board unpause that project in the fall of this last year. So we've begun the initial work. So we're, we're moving straight ahead, you know, trying to get this done as soon as possible. But there are other projects that, that will be, you know, find themselves paused along the way. Ultimately, the board will make a decision in July that will say, here's what we know now with the dollars that we have and where we're going. But ultimately, we saw this in the last recession where we had to do this realignment process and projects such as Linwood Link were pushed out a few years and we were able to, to make, make do and get that done on time eventually. So it's, I, I think that, what it sounds like is it might be good for us to come back and do a full realignment update at some point for the commission as well. You know, I think I'm here today to answer some of these questions and just kind of gauge the interest from the commission. And really, Miranda's here to focus on the Model Code Partnership because that work is happening right now, super exciting. But yeah, I'm happy to continue to talk about this if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to throw it off, off track. But yeah, the realignment, that was kind of a term that I was a little bit unclear on as well. But I, you did touch on that. But I, I guess I won't go any further. But certainly, I think, I think I have some, you know, questions and interest in, in knowing more about, I guess, impacts of delays and, and how that could look. And, and I guess ultimately, what I'm wondering is, are we looking at a situation where by 2036, we have, we have the whole route planned out and we have the concrete towers, but no track laid on it? Or we, or we're only halfway up to maybe to the industrial center? That kind of, you know, potential, what that could look like delay-wise?
That's, all those, all those are kind of up there as criteria that could potentially impact the decisions that we make. Executive Summers, who's a board, board member of ours on Sound Transit Board, has said that he would much rather see us segment and do something to, you know, Mariner or Payne Field before we push out anything else and don't get it delivered. You hear from board members and people throughout the community that getting the spine done, I think that we continue to hear that in Snohomish County, get to Everett at all costs is, is really the key. And that's going to be something that as we start to gauge interest from the public on what they want to do, you're going to see, the region will have to fight through some of this. But ultimately, our, our goal is to get all of these projects still delivered. So yeah.
Got it. Commissioner Finch, do you have another question?
Just more of a comment. I think that the offer to come back to us with a more detailed update and explanation would be super helpful. I also think that providing your PowerPoint or other materials in advance of our discussion would also be helpful so we could, you know, come up with some informed questions for you guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, the Everett City Council brought up this very topic last Wednesday and have asked us to come up. So I'm working on that as well. I'll probably bring CEO Rogoff. And we'd be happy to follow up with the commission as well. Because I, I could tell you, we could spend a full hour talking on all of this stuff right now.
Well, and I, I know you can. And I know you're not responsible for the potential delays to service. But I also know that, you know, thousands of hours have been spent, not only with the Metro Everett Plan, but also, also by, you know, uncompensated citizens and their participation. And so getting to Everett Station with, with active service is incredibly important.
Absolutely.
Great. Maybe we can go back to Miranda? Did you, could you take us through the next part of your presentation?
Sure thing. And there's only a few slides left. So I want to focus tonight on something that, that we do know a little bit more about and, and can have a little more control over the timeline and process, which is the Model Code Partnership Project. And this is something that we are working in partnership with Everett, Linwood, Snohomish County, and the Puget Sound Regional Council. We applied for an FTA grant. Sound Transit was the grant applicant, but we were supported. All the cities, all the partners were signers to the application. And the goal of this really is to, the FTA has an interest in creating consistency along light rail corridors as opposed to planning for individual stations. So it is a corridor-focused project. And the, the main goal is being consistency and applying best practices across multiple jurisdictions. And this will be looking at aligning and improving things like design standards. And certainly, we all have a common interest in transit-oriented development. Then there's streamline permitting, increased predictability, which would also benefit all partners to understand timing a little bit better. And we're look to update policies, regulations, and potentially permitting processes with a focus on both ST facilities like stations, alignment, operations, maintenance facility, even construction staging areas. And then really looking at the full station area and how development may occur around that. So the, the FTA grant that I mentioned, we did receive a $2 million grant award. It is a pilot program to support corridor-wide adoption of model language. Again, with a priority on TOD, multimodal connectivity, public-private partnerships, and infrastructure improvements, economic development, removing barriers to affordable housing, and potentially promoting green building or other climate actions. The partnership has three components. And it starts with an inventory report. So Sound Transit, we've reviewed your comprehensive plans, subarea plans like Metro Everett, which is very robust and thoughtful. We have catalogued policies, policy statements from each of those types of plan, master plan, light rail plan, comp plan, into an inventory report. We've shared that with staff. We are currently working with our Everett Link consultants, Kemley Horn, to compile a similar report focused on regulations. So highlighting elements of your municipal and development codes that may impact, again, Sound Transit facilities, but also station area planning. um, Sound Transit facilities, but also station area planning. Um, we will share that with, with staff hopefully in the next several weeks. We will provide ample time for review to see, uh, you know, whether we got it right. Uh, we'll have a workshop, we'll talk more about it, and that will lead us into the second component, which will be a gap analysis. And really we'll be looking at kind of three major categories of gaps. First, you know, there's a likelihood um, that you may have some gaps between the aspirational policy statements and your planning documents and the implementing regulations. Uh, you know, that is, is certainly very common. I've noticed things even in your plans that say, you know, develop incentives for. Um, and then whether you have had a chance to do that or not, those will be the types of gaps within your own policy and regulatory um, frameworks that we'll look at. We'll also look at gaps amongst you and your peer cities, amongst, well, the county and the city uh, of Linwood. And talk about, you know, for example, you know, we're, we're trying to design a linear uh, system along multiple jurisdictions and different stormwater and critical areas regulations. And even a simple thing like what addition of the Department of Ecology, LID Stormwater Manual you're using. So Linwood, for example, is still using 2012 and Everett's using 2019. So even um, you know, if there could be consistency amongst the storm water manual addition that is being used, that will help us design a linear system. And then the third gap is uh, kind of between where everybody's um, you know, policies and regulations are with really what is the model, what is the best practice for TOD or public-private partnerships. So we'll bring in a lot, we'll use a lot of that information and work with the jurisdictions to really come up with a package um, that may be considered for local adoption. And that'll include case studies um, from across the country and likely around the world. Um, but then there will be kind of a package of topics that we can help customize for individual cities. And what we want to really introduce to you tonight is that in your role as the commission, who are the, the, you know, the gate uh, to the council um, and really a bridge a lot of with the public comment um, into making that recommendation. Um, when you're considering, you know, these, there will not be a package of, a policy package or regulations package, there won't be a code batch um, for model code. The, the various best practices may be adopted through the housing strategies um, that a lot of jurisdictions are adopting right now. I've actually talked to Becky about the housing strategy that you guys are working on. And it sounds um, like that may go through recommendations, um, but it may not get all the way to policy and regulation. Maybe this is the kind of thing, maybe this is a gap that could be filled using Model Code Partnership dollars and consultant support. We also, you know, obviously you'll be reviewing and, and heavily influencing station area planning and master planning, including master planning like what's happening with the convergence at Everett Station project right now. Uh, we've been participating in some of those discussions and the vision uh, that's being developed for that station area is very compelling. Um, and there's um, you know, great visions for um, you know, net zero buildings and walkable uh, tree lined streets. And um, you know, at some point, um, I believe that project also does not come with, I know it's not a city of Everett sponsored uh, project, but, but you have staff involved. And um, maybe at some point there needs to be a code barrier analysis or to help codify some regulations to actually implement that vision. So maybe that's another thing um, that this partnership project could assist with locally. And then obviously, as Becky was mentioning at the beginning, um, the, the comprehensive plan updates that are due uh, by 2024, we timed the grant period to end uh, near, you know, when the comp plan updates would be due. So uh, that was an intentional way to try to sync up so that you'll be adopting policies, you know, through at least one um, one consistent, every jurisdiction will adopt uh, the comp plan. So that is really the summary and that's the end of my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, uh, Miranda. I, I guess I have a quick question. This Model Code Partnership here is new to, to us in Everett, but I, I would have guessed that Sound Transit has been doing this sort of thing previously uh, in Linwood and coming up into Northgate and, and this, so we're not necessarily starting from scratch here?
Well, um, this is a new process with an extension project. And it does apply some of the lessons learned in other projects and other extensions where they didn't necessarily consider, you know, permitting considerations. Um, this is the kind of thing that really can hold projects up at the end, whether it's negotiating about permit conditions or, you know, just finding that there's a big disconnect and a mismatch. You know, a lot of codes, uh, you know, as I mentioned, this is our first foray into Snohomish County. And um, I experienced this in Shoreline too. If you've not had a light rail extension come through, your code might not, you know, there might be some, some gaps or some conflicts there, including, you, and I, this is not a problem in Everett, but e- even the definition of a mass, a high capacity transit facility is often written for a bus stop and not a light rail station. So by, by doing this work early and really in deep partnership with the local staff and electeds, um, e- especially in supporting as you go through your own planning processes. Um, you know, we're, we're hoping that this uh, again, creates more certainty, predictability, timeliness and reduces delays that other Sound Transit extensions have encountered later in the project.
Yeah, this is a huge project, very complex, and I think very uh, top of mind to a lot of people, very, very important issue. Any other questions from, or comments from commissioners?
I would also just add uh, real quickly about this. I mean, Miranda doesn't uh, give herself enough credit for this work. I mean, what, what she's done here in, in securing this grant, um, this, what she's doing with the Model Code Partnership could be used as a, a template uh, across the nation once this is all over. So it's very ambitious, uh, but if there's one person that can do it, it's Miranda and we're all very excited. I mean, this is something that, you know, could, could win awards for the work because it is so forward thinking. And it's difficult, but if we do it right, uh, it could really uh, work for jurisdictions and projects like these in the future.
Well, thanks, Eric.
Looked like, looked like Becky wanted to, wanted to chime in?
Yes, thanks Chair Yanisak. Um, I was just gonna make a couple of comments. Um, one is that I will um, ask Kathy to forward out a copy of this presentation for you. It does have some maps and for those of you who uh, couldn't see it on the screen, you'll get that, um, get a copy of that. And then two, uh, we are looking at um, your long-term schedule and definitely plan to plug in uh, Sound Transit and work with them to make sure that we're keeping the planning commission uh, up to date on what's happening.
Thank you, Becky. And, and any other commissioners with questions or comments? So I know we, we will then open up to uh, any uh, public comment on this. And I know that the intent tonight was just to keep this pretty high level. And I, I know that we could probably dedicate uh, multiple hour, hours long meetings to, to this because there is so much interest. Um, but I, I guess I will see, Kathy, was there anybody who signed up specifically to speak in advance?
Not in advance. I did get um, somebody that joined us after the meeting started at extension 4608. And I'm not sure if that's a member of the public who wanted to speak.
Okay, well, perhaps we could call through the people attending, call through numbers, and if you are a member of the public wishing to comment, um, that would be your opportunity as she calls out, as Kathy calls out your, your phone number. And um, please do try, try to keep comments to, and questions to, to just, or comments to just a couple of minutes. Uh, we do want to get through here and, and there will be other opportunities, I think, for, for future meetings to kind of get more in-depth about some of the, the subtopics in this very uh, complex and um, important uh, subject. So Kathy, you want to go ahead and call through any other uh, phone numbers of attendees?
Yeah, I think the only number I have is just one, one is 4608. And I'm not sure if that's a member of the public or um, somebody that was already in the meeting, so.
Yes, I am.
Oh, are, are you wishing to address the commi- the commission today?
Oh, no, I'm getting some information. Oh, excuse me, good evening. I'm looking at strategy and planning 2021 services. And I didn't know if um, the disabled and the handicapped would have special, anything more added to the um, Sound Transit system. I fell on one of the buses, but it was because there wasn't a bar that over the, where the handrails were, should have been. Is Sound Transit looking at additional safety measures for um, the handicapped and the disabled? Because I thought they needed one more bar and I wouldn't have fallen at all.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I would actually love to follow up with you if that's possible. I can have my contact information shared with you if, if that works. Um, it's just something we're constantly looking at. Um, I just had a operator from um, one of the CT buses reach out to us a few weeks ago about lighting at a station. Safety is always our top priority for our writers, for our operators, and anything that we can do and improve, we're always looking at. So we've got a whole team that assesses all our sites and takes information, feedback uh, to constantly upgrade our system and make sure that we're keeping our writers and operators safe. So if there's an easy way for us to exchange information, um, I believe our contact information should be with the uh, the slide deck uh, that we just used. So if we could get that to you, I'd be happy to. Otherwise, if, if the chat's working, I tried to use the chat earlier and couldn't type anything in it, maybe it's disabled. Uh, I can make sure to get your information.
Yes, sir, and thank you for your time. Do I press un, um, the pound sign now? So that I won't be heard again?
You can mute, mute, yeah, mute by pressing pound six, yes.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. So that, was that everybody else attending, Kathy?
Yep, that was it.
Okay, um, I guess any last minute closing questions or comments from commissioners? All right, thank you very much, Erica and Miranda. Very, very informative and, and we look forward to uh, yeah, future presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll work with Becky to make sure that we get something on the books in the next couple, next couple of months or whatever works best for you.
Great, great. Okay, we will go ahead and, and, thank you. We'll go ahead and close uh, item, or wrap up with Agenda Item One and move on to Agenda Item Two, which is Active Land Use Projects Interactive Maps. And I think uh, like, is this going to be Erica Spencer?
Yeah, this is Becky. Maybe I'll introduce Erica. So the, uh, Erica, yeah, she is our expert GIS programmer analyst. She's wonderful and we're super excited to have her share this information with you tonight about, on the Active Land Use Projects Interactive Map. It's um, something that we think is, will be useful for the public. So Erica, with that, do you want to start your presentation?
Yeah, sure. Hi, uh, hi, good evening commissioners. Um, I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully this works. All right, do you see the uh, city's homepage?
I'm not seeing it. I don't think anyone else is.
I'm seeing it.
You're seeing it? Okay, um, so I'm going to talk about how to um, access and navigate the Active Land Use Projects uh, Interactive Map. So there's a couple of ways to um, locate it. If you're on the um, Everett homepage and you scroll down to the map gallery, and then select Active Projects. And then from here, there's um, an image of a map, and if you select that, you can, um, the map opens. And then the second way to find it, if we go back to the homepage, and if you hover over your city, then go to Community Planning and Economic Development Department. And then scroll down here to Projects and Permitting. And then you go to Development Activity. The same um, images on this page as well, that you can click on and then the map will open. Um, the interactive map uh, includes 13 project types. Um, they date back to 2019. And I update them on a weekly basis. Uh, the project types are um, appeals, binding site plans, um, ESA reviews, flood zone reviews, historic reviews, uh, review process one, two, three and five, SEPA uh, shoreline reviews, short subdivision and variance requests. So if you click on the icon here, you will get the interactive map, like home screen. On the left-hand side is the home panel about how to use the map. There is an email contact here if you need help or um, have questions, and that gets routed to me. There's a PDF guide uh, with additional information on how to use the map. And then there's also a link to the Newsflash subscription page where folks can go on and um, sign up for their neighborhood. And then we send out a report every two weeks uh, with the active projects in those neighborhoods. And then if you want to see the past reports, there's a link here. And it basically takes you back to the Development Activity page. And there's a chart here with um, the recent reports. So if you click this link, it pulls up the report. Um, they're organized by neighborhood and the latest report, all the projects happen to be in Port Gardner. So it's got the uh, project address and project number and additional information. And then the best part is the link here, and that takes you directly to E-Track It, uh, which shows additional information and all the project documents that the planners have uploaded. So, going back to the map, so next to the home tab is the layers tab. Um, by default, the active projects are, they're checked on, they're orange dots everywhere. And then if you want to see the closed projects, you just check this box and those show up as well. I have them turned off by default because it's just a little cluttered. And then uh, we have parcels and building footprints that you will show up when you zoom in closer on the map. And then city limits outline and the historic overlays are on here. And then if you want to see the neighborhood boundaries, you can check that box and the neighborhood boundaries will show up. Um, if you hit this plus button, you have uh, different base map options. So it's by default, it's on the topo map, but if you want to see something plainer, you can, there's a light gray map. You can turn on the um, city's aerial photo, uh, which is more detailed than the world imagery, but the world imagery goes outside the city limits. So, um, if you want to, there's the toolbar at the top here. And if you want to pan around the map, you just click the tool and pan around. You can zoom in by clicking the tool and just drawing a box and it'll zoom in. And you can do the same to zoom out. You can also use your mouse wheel and scroll back and forth. Uh, the home button here just brings you back to the home panel. The initial view takes you back to the initial extent. And then the identify tool will um, identify anything that's currently in the view. So you just draw a box around, say you want to look at these projects and you select them, and then it populates on the left-hand side here of everything that you selected. Um, if you are working like on a small screen, you can minimize this home panel. You can just hit this um, arrow icon here and that'll hide that. You can turn off the tool labels up here on the upper right corner. That'll give you some more screen space if you want to. Um, if you need to clear the selection, you just hit the back button and then hit the X to close the panel. Um, the search box is in the upper right corner. It's a smart search. So it'll work for project numbers, addresses, parcel IDs, um, keywords. Uh, so let's just give this an ex, as an example, we'll do Rev 121006. And so the result comes up on the left-hand side and you can hit this over arrow button. And it'll highlight on map where it's located. And you can just zoom in on it. Oh, wrong one. Here we go. So you can get a better idea of where that's located. And then again, you can click uh, this link here and that'll take you out to the project documents on E-Track It. Uh, you can search by address. And that will search the parcel addresses. So it's got one result, and you hit the over arrow button. And then if you want to zoom to it, you can hit these three dots here, and it'll zoom to it even more. One last feature that I like. If you go to the Identify tool and you select more than one project, and it's kind of hard to see everything over here on the left side. So if you click this icon here and say, "Switch to Table," it'll show it in a table view, which you can then sort. You can remove columns, and then on this icon, you can actually export the table in various formats. So that could be, you know, really handy if you want to, you know, look at it in Excel or some other format. And then to switch back, you just go, "Switch to List." So that's about all I have for the Active Land Use Projects map. I'm happy to take any questions.
Very cool. Thank you, Erica. Any commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Finch?
Thanks, Eric. I think this is a very useful tool, and I've enjoyed using it since it came out in December. I'm wondering, is there a way to color-code the dots so one could select for certain kinds of applications that are being processed as opposed to everything being orange and going through them?
So you're saying color-code them by like project type?
Yes.
That's possible. I'm trying to think of how that would look with 13 different project types. We could maybe condense it down, but I can definitely, yeah, look into doing that. Do you think that would help just kind of identify things more clearly right off the bat?
Either that or you could make each product type, project type, you know, clickable on the left-hand toolbar. And that way, you could turn them off and on. I think that folks that are comfortable using this kind of application are used to sorting through, you know, a number of different colored dots. So I don't know that that's going to become an impediment to use, but it would be helpful from an efficiency standpoint.
So like, if you just wanted to show like the Review Process 1s, then you would be able to do that?
Yes, exactly. Yep, exactly. And then I think the reports are helpful, sort of by neighborhood. I think that as a planning commission, as we've talked about in the past, it would still be helpful to have a high-level overview on a periodic basis as to the Active Land Use Projects, new applications, housing starts, that kind of thing. I know that's beyond the purview of this specific application, but it would be helpful to understand.
Okay, yeah, I could definitely, yeah, put some thought into that as far as like another way to produce a report through the map.
That's great, thanks a lot.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, Commissioner Zelensky?
Thank you, Cherry Anasek. I would just say this looks like a very useful tool, and it's, I look forward to playing around with it on-site someday. And as we get into proposed comp plan amendments later on, which are site-specific, this will be very helpful, I think, in being able to review those kinds of things right on a computer screen. So I would applaud the city's efforts to create this kind of a tool. And Erica, in particular, if you were the prime author, nice job.
Why, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Erica.
All right, thank you.
All right, I guess we could open it up to any public comments. Kathy, is there anyone else on the line?
No, just the 4608, the person who spoke earlier.
Okay, I don't, and I don't know if she wanted to comment on this presentation? I guess I'll just say this, if there's anyone from the public who is wanting to comment, now would be the opportunity to go ahead and press star six. You can unmute and make your comment. Okay, it looks like we have no, nobody else wishing to speak. With that, then, I guess that wraps up Agenda Item 2. Maybe Becky, any final or additional staff comments before we adjourn?
No, thank you. I don't have any additional comments. Good to see you all.
Okay, and so our next meeting is going to be April?
Yeah, that would be April 2nd, or, excuse me, April 6th, right, Kathy?
Yeah.
Yes, April 6th.
Okay, great. Any, before we adjourn, any additional comments or anything for the good of the order from any commissioners? All right, thanks, everybody, for your patience with some of the technical difficulties getting started here. And it looks like we will adjourn today and regroup back on April 6th. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.